Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name's Mary Schreier. I'm Deputy Mayor for the Town of Quispemcis and I'll be presiding over tonight's meeting. First of all, welcome and thank you for joining us in person and online. So may I have an approval of the agenda? Councillor Thompson, please. Seconded by Councillor Beggar. On the question? Please vote. We're all in favor? Motion carried. Thank you very much. And treaty acknowledgement. Councillor Love, please.
We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Quispemcis exists on the traditional territory of the Wollistookay, Malasit and Mickmac people, who ancestors along with the Pasmaquadi tribes, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and to the descendants of this traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias and always in the best interest of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Councillor Love. Disclosure of Mayor's comments. So on Mayor Hoyer's absence, I will relay her comments. And first of all, we, as a council, would like to give a big thank you for everyone in our community, in your willingness to adapt and to adjust as we deal with unprecedented heat and dry conditions. We have returned to more seasonal temperatures this week, but the lack of rain has prompted town staff to take steps to protect us in Quispemcis. Hammond River Park and Millennium Cycle Park remain closed because of the risk of forest fires. All other parks and trails remain open, although residents are encouraged to limit their use. On a note, I can say the Qplex is lovely inside. It's nice and cool for a walk. Barbecue pits have been removed from Means Cove Park and barbecuing is permitted in, is not permitted in any park areas. Please monitor our website at quispemcis.ca and follow social media for the latest developments as we protect Quispemcis and the Canopacases Valley in our province of New Brunswick. More than 30 wildfires continue to burn in New Brunswick. We are very proud that our own Canopacases Valley Fire Department Chief assisted crews with the Irish Town Fire in Moncton, in the Moncton area last week. Thank you for your contributions. It has not gone unnoticed. A burn ban remains in place throughout New Brunswick, which includes campfires and fireworks. Activity on Crown Land in the province is still restricted. Follow the New Brunswick Government's Fire Watch for the latest provincial information. Speaking of fire departments, our Canopacases Valley Fire Department has earned accredited agency status from the Commission on Fire Accreditation International and the Centre for Public Safety Excellence. This helps fire and emergency service agencies worldwide improve self-assessment, peer review, and continuous quality improvement. KV Fire Department is the first in New Brunswick and the only one in eight in Canada to receive this distinction. Congratulations Chief Boyle and his team on this accomplishment. Very well done. You may have seen the buses on the roads. KV Go is on the road and is a go. It's a public transit demonstration project operating in partnership between Quispemcis and Rossay to offer daytime bus transportation to various destinations in the Canopacases Valley. Stops include grocery stores, the Shoppers Jogmyer Plaza, Landing Court, Means Cove Park, the Qplex, Gondola Point Beach, and many more. This is a free demonstration project and with the goal of exploring the long-term transit solutions for KV. Full bus routes and schedules information are available at kvgo.org. While you're there, take the ridership survey and tell us about your experience. Thank you to the staff in both communities for your hard work in turning this demonstration project into a reality. And thank you for the council and your determination and Councillor Beggar to making sure that this became a success. Applications are now being accepted for the Community Investment Program. Through two streams of funding, the Community Investment Program, formerly known as Community Grant Program, supports individuals, groups, and organizations who contribute to the quality of life for our residents. The deadline for applications is Friday, August 29. Find a link to the applications on the, on the Applications and Forums page on our website. And I'd like to thank everyone who attended our New Brunswick Day celebrations in the Arts and Cultural Park earlier this month. Thank you to council for being there. The staff always do it upright. We had a tremendous music from the solid gold and very informative walk and talk with David Goss. It's rewarding, as always, to see so many visitors come to our celebrations. I couldn't believe how many people I met from out of, out of town and out of province, and it keeps continuing to grow. Congratulations also to two dozen athletes, coaches, and staff from Quispemcis, who are part of Team New Brunswick at the 2025 Canada Summer Games in St. John's, Newfoundland, and Labrador. The games continue until August 25, and Quispemcis, of course, will be hosting some events when the Canada Summer Games come to our region in 2029. Believe it or not, this is the final regular meeting of the Quispemcis Town Hall until after Labor Day. Summer's almost over, but this means it's time to say goodbye to our more than 20 students who joined us as summer staff this year. Our students are invaluable to their contributions they make to our community with their times that they spend with us and what they do and how they make our lives that much more enjoyable all summer long. They maintain our parks, trails, and playgrounds, manage day-to-day operations at the 97.3 The Wave Pool, organize our summer programs, work in administration, engineering, and so much more. Thank you to all our students for your hard work and dedication, and we appreciate you, and we are better because of you. Thank you so much. With our students wrapping up, I wanted to remind everyone that the 97.3 The Wave Pool will be closed for the season on Friday, August 29. Also, lifeguards wrap up their season on Means Cove Beach and Gondola Point Beach on August 22. The Summer Series events in the Arts and Cultural Park will end for the season next Tuesday, so if you haven't taken in a show, next Tuesday is your last chance, August 26. The Firefly Splash Park will remain open till a later date, so still a chance to cool off. Follow the town's social media channels and check out our website at quispemcis.ca for closure and wrap-up information. And we are just a couple of weeks away from the start of another school year. As a reminder, vehicle and pedestrian traffic will soon be increasing once again as schools open. Please be extra careful and use extra caution on the roads that we can have a safe and healthy, happy start to the academic year for all students. That wraps up the mayor's comments for this meeting. Next, we'll ask for disclosure of interests. Seeing there is none. Presentation. So we are very fortunate tonight to have Chief Boyle here to give us some insights into the EMO, KV EMO, Emergency Measures Operations. And of course, it's quite in tune with what's happening across our province. So Chief Boyle, thank you for coming, and we appreciate the time you're going to spend with us this evening.
Great, thank you.
Oh, here it is.
So I was just going to give a high-level overview of our emergency management program, and I believe you have the emergency management program document as part of your council package and then to move forward from there. So I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on the background of where we got here because we have, you know, we've talked about it before. There were attempts several years ago to move towards a joint EMO between both municipalities. And then in 2022, when there was a job posting for the fire chief position, as part of that job description was EMO Director, which I noticed afterwards, but was part of, part of my job. And we started with a steering committee. We worked towards getting an EMO established. But the thing that really brought it home for me, and I put a picture up here, because this was an incident that we had happen in December of 2023. We had a structure fire at the apartments on Rockhaven and Rossay, and an apartment, a fire in a building like that is a challenge for us anyway. You can see there's another ladder truck from another fire department there with us. We had probably 25 or 30 displaced residents, probably about 15 of them that needed accommodations and were working with the Red Cross. They were sheltered at the Canopacases Baptist Church, and the Red Cross was doing their registration process. About two hours later, someone called in a bomb threat to KV High, and the police considered it credible, so they evacuated the school. Anyone who has kids who go to KV High, they evacuate to the Canopacases Baptist Church. So at about 10:30, 11:00 that morning, we had a fire incident. We had evacuated residents. We had the Red Cross. We had a bomb threat going on, with the police doing a search, with all the kids upstairs and, and the residents downstairs. And that was kind of like, okay, we can't do this independently anymore. We have to more, move forward and do this as a joint effort. So I think I have, this might be the second or third time now that I've actually talked about emergency management in front of council. And just reinforcing the point, and I know at least my, my perspective, is sometimes we would think of EMO as post-tropical storms with high winds or spring freshets. And that was kind of the only time we, or at least I would, is think about, well, that's EMO. There's a storm coming, or in the spring, they're going to start River Watch. What I'm, what I'm trying to reinforce, both with council and with staff, is what emergency management actually is, and trying to bring it into the culture of all four organizations, being both towns, police, and fire department. So emergency management is obviously responding to large-scale risks, but it's also being ready for things that bring risk. So for example, anytime you bring large crowds together, well, there could potentially be a risk to that, or there's logistics to that. We have candidate celebrations, and we have proms and graduations, and for our community, you bring, you know, 1,000 or 3,000 people together, that's a big event for us. A good example is when we get into blizzards. Not necessarily like normal snowstorms, but you get into a blizzard where you start having road closures and plows are pulled off the road. Well, that, that's an emergency management event that we have to start looking at that way. The, the top-left picture right there is at our Santa Claus parade, where now we set up a command post roughly a kilometer from the parade route that involves police and fire, and then moving forward should also involve the towns as well. Because again, there's a lot of people. Something as simple as an ambulance call on a parade route is going to take some logistics and some cooperation to actually respond to. So it's trying to reinforce and, and bring it into the culture that emergency management is something that we all have to be part of. It's very easy for municipalities to write a plan and put it on shelf, and then the next thing you know, you're evacuating because of a wildfire. So really trying to bring it to the forefront for us. So in developing the emergency management document that, that you have before you, we followed a CSA standard. So it is basically an instruction manual on how to develop an EMO program. So we are kind of in that bottom-right corner. We're in the, the due part, is we've had the leadership, the commitment, have the authorities, funding, we're getting into the plans, and just moving into the training and resources and those sort of things. So also, every time I talk about it, I also reinforce the point that we are probably another three years from a fully functional EMO. And what I mean by that is we have had the planning, training, we've had exercises or real-world events, we've done a quality improvement cycle, and then we're back to the beginning again. So just trying to manage expectations on where we are with that. So as I mentioned, the, the, and I guess really the main reason I'm here tonight is we have the final document provided for council, and we had provided versions before that were the drafts. The thing that was holding it, holding it up is we had appendices in there, and we were trying to get those done, and then we realized they really don't need to be part of this, and they're actually holding up the document. So we just removed those and are now able to present you with the final completed document. So without reading all of that, very simple, the mission of KV EMO is keep people safe. The vision is to understand mitigate risks, is to respond collaboratively, collaboratively to mitigate what we can. And when you get into the CSA standard, actually talks about you're required to have a mission and a vision. So like I said, the mission is a pretty simple one. When we talk about emergency management is, I talk about a scalable approach. So understanding that the residents and, and homeowners in the community have a responsibility. So you'll often, often hear messaging from, from NB EMO, 72-hour readiness, be ready for a power outage if power's out for a few days, if you can mitigate potential flood impact on your property. The one we're going to be talking about a lot moving forward in the future is the Fire Smart Program, and that's something that has been rolled out provincially that gives direction on what homeowners can do to help protect their own homes from a wildfire threat. When the homeowner can't manage, first responders take over. If there's a house fire, the fire department, obviously, if there's something wrong with a culvert and a ditch, there's works. And then if we get overwhelmed, then that's when KV EMO will take over management and we start that joint approach. And when we need help, we call in NB EMO. So there is a governance structure, and because I already report indirectly to councils through the Fire Board, is, is we just decided to keep that structure. So moving forward, when you see the minutes from the Fire Board minutes, you'll also see a specific EMO report, a standalone report for EMO that would part of every package as well. We do have a formal EMO committee comprised of representatives from, from all four organizations, and they're looking after strategy and long-term planning. Each municipality should have a deputy EMO director and then their own emergency preparedness team. Again, without going too far into it, is you'll see as part of the document is a risk assessment, because it's really hard to address a problem if you don't know what they are. And when you get into a risk assessment, it's just basically a formula of how likely is it something is going to happen, and if it does happen, how bad will it be? Once we, once we assign risks to the various, or assign risk levels to the various risks within the community, then we start looking at prevention, mitigation, and then if necessary, response. There's obviously a big communications part to this. So the first part was to communicate internally. So that's communicating with council. Earlier this year, we had meetings with staff, again, from all four, to introduce staff to the concept of KV EMO. I think we hit probably 85 or 90%. So we had six briefings, I think through May, April, May, or May into June. So if we're talking about 85%, there's probably 170 people, something like that. If we combine everyone together, so we're pretty happy with the, with the uptake on that. And then we'll shift towards an external communications model. So there'll be issues management, like prevention messaging, risk management, which we were basically in now, is we're telling people there's a risk out there, here's things you need to do. And at the, the extreme end is crisis communications, when there's like something extremely urgent and we act, need to act now on it. Like any other organization, what makes it up is the, is the people. So we are working through an audit of what people do we have, what training do they have, what potential roles can they take on, and then working on a, a training program for our people moving forward. I'm also truly believe in ongoing education and practice and exercise. You may have heard of the different ICS, so it's the Incident Command System courses. They call them ICS Canada courses, and there are different levels. Those courses are fantastic, but they do you nothing if you don't follow up with them afterwards. They're three- and four-day courses. If you haven't looked at any of that material in two years, it's not going to help you much. So that's something that we have planned moving forward as well. Kind of leaning back into the accreditation model, is there will be a quality improvement piece to this. So when we do have an exercise or when we do have some sort of real-world event, when it's over, is we will actually do an after-action review, talk about what went well, talk about what could be improved on, and kind of go from there. So I think the big thing, one of my main messages when I talk about KV EMO, is just asking for patience and how long it's going to get us to be where we want to be. I will note that you'll see vests on there, and as a fire department, we've started to implement the emergency management principles on fire scenes. So you'll see us wearing vests, and the intent of that is to understand who has what role, and then who their, their comparable is inside an emergency operations center, if we get to that point. So we did implement that change. So I will open up for questions if there are any, and I will also add that our intent was to do a Level One Activation Exercise this summer, and we've decided to go real-world with that, because of where we're at right now. So I'm happy to answer any questions specific to EMO or the current wildfire events.
Thank you, Chief Boyle, for that presentation. And three years seems like a lifetime away to have it fully implemented, but I know it'll go like that, and before we know it. And in today's world of dangers out there, we have enough dangers with COVID, we thought that was something, and wildfires to boot, and flooding. So with that, thank you, and thank you to your team, please, from all of us, that your team does a wonderful job. And I'd like to recognize Councillor Miller's contribution to the Fire Board and everything he does, and Councillor Beggar, I believe, or Councillor Donovan. Oh, they switched councillors on me in between. Councillor, no, Donovan. So with that, I'll open it to questions, and I believe Councillor Olsen, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Captain, or Chief, I should say, Captain. That's a little ways further down. But Chief, on an excellent report, we've come a long way over the last few years. And when we first talked about KV EMO, we were looking for a place that we could operate out of, and we're a long ways past that point. But it's encouraging to see the dedication of our, of our fire department and the, and the accomplishments that they've achieved and the seriousness that they're taking their roles, because we're all counting on them. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Olsen, Councillor Miller, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Chief. And, and again, I know you've already had it a couple of times, but huge congratulations. I mean, I've been on the Fire Board for a long time, but this year by finalizing the EMO, getting it up and running, but also the accreditation, and for the people that are watching here and, and here in person, the accreditation, there's only eight fire departments in all of Canada that have this. And not only will it help, it's not just getting the accreditation, it's what it does for the, the residents of the valley and surrounding areas. So it's always about continuous improvement, making sure we're in the right spot, right time. And, and you had mentioned it with the EMO, that's also part of the thing. So to do both of these in the same year, it's, it's a great accomplishment. I do have a question, though, as well as, you know, we've, we've got the two towns and we're working together. So you said about three years, you think we're going to be up, fully running. And it's, so my, my question is, is there something else that we as the towns need to, to, to help out with? Is there any, you know, are we all, all on track to hit those goals? And just, just kind of an update on that.
Yeah, I guess rather than saying three years to be functional, I should say three years to get through the entire planning cycle. Because like I had mentioned, is I want us to get to a point where we have, we practiced through the different activation levels, we've exercised them or had actual responses to events, and then do the, the quality improvement part. And then that's a living document, because what will happen is maybe a year or a year and a half from now, is we'll be coming back and saying, here's the changes we've made to this document. So when I say three years, I mean to get all the way through that process. Yep.
Councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would move that council approve the KV EMO Emergency Management Program and refer any financial requirements to the budget process. Also, council extends a thank you to Chief Boyle for his insightful presentation and valuable contributions.
Thank you, Your Worship. I don't have anything on the question, but I do, I just have a question for Chief Boyle. First, again, congratulations on the accreditation. That's wonderful, and thank you to you and your staff for everything you do. In terms of the EMO, you did talk about risk mitigation and prevention, and it's something that I've thought about for the last number of years, and it's ironic that you're here tonight and just what's happening in our environment. But I'm wondering if we're doing anything in regards to thinning of our forests. Like, I mean, we are so blessed with having so much green space, but it also, I assume, would make us kind of higher risk if we did have a fire, and there's a lot of big kind of chunks of land, either public as well as private in our communities. And I'm just wondering if that's something that the EMO is going to be looking at, or kind of, I guess, just in terms of looking at prevention in the future, because I guess, you know, forest fires aren't going to be going away. If anything, they'll be more common.
Yeah, I don't, I, I'm not an expert on forest management, so I can't exactly answer that. I would say that moving into the Fire Smart Program is less about forest management and more about managing forests around structures. So when we talk about trees and, and homes, as we talk about a wildland interface, so that's where the forest ends, the community starts. The other part is intermix, and that's when you have houses and structures in amongst forested areas. And what do we do about that? One of the draws of where we live is all of the trees, and if you've ever seen drone footage from, you know, or seen drone footage, it looks like there's no community. It's all trees. I think the challenge is going to be, how much risk are we willing to accept to maintain our properties as they are? The, the forest management part, I'm not sure. That would probably be a DNR question moving forward. I do know in speaking with other fire chiefs from Alberta and B.C., communities that have implemented the Fire Safe Program and homes that have implemented the Fire Safe practices, that's having trees cut back so far, it's about having a metal roof, it's about not, even something as simple as not having a, like a wicker mat, like things that are combustible on your deck. You can see footage of communities where three houses burned and one didn't, because they implemented those programs. So it's one of those things, is how much risk are we willing to accept to keep things how we want them to be? I know there's a lot of conversation about I know there's a lot of conversation about parks and trails and closures and all of that stuff. And I don't like using the term unprecedented, because we used it so much in the last few years. But it's unprecedented, where we're at right now, like we have never seen. I've been in the fire service for thirty years, never seen anything like it ever. And it is so dry that if we don't get it early, it's going to get away from us. And again, talking to those chiefs out west, they said when a wildfire becomes uncontrolled, you are a spectator. So for us, it's the prevention side, and it's like, okay, what are we going to do about that? So I would say Fire Smart practices, the actual forest management would be more like DNR. Like, I don't, maybe, I don't know if there's forest engineers, but someone would have to tell us that, because even if we were to say, hey, let's maintain the forest, that's a very large logistical challenge to do that. So I'm going to keep pushing the Fire Smart principles moving forward.
I'll just wrap this up, and I just wanted to comment, Chief, is when I was in Ottawa for the Federation of Municipalities, I did attend a seminar on wildfire and flooding. And one of the handouts was on how to make your home safe. You know, just don't use that black mulch, like little tips that they had to keeping your home safe. And it was very, very informative. Years ago, I dated myself, we went back and we were, we did a mock situation where the, we couldn't get off of the Penangale Road. There had been a trail derailment. And so back then, we were back at the old Gondola Point, I hate to say it, the Gondola Point Rec Center, everybody knows where it is. Maybe some of us, majority of us. And that's where our headquarters was, like, it was a makeshift room, that that was it. And it was, and so when I look at the growth of the town today, grave concerns with Parkside, the trailer park area, where it's very isolated, only one entrance in, one entrance out, grave concerns there. Now we have the arterial actually cutting, you know, we have all the development on Squire and all that area. And then we still have the old core Quispam sis. So we've really grown, and I know that your job is not made easier with our growth. But knowing that you're at the helm really makes a difference. So thank you very much for everything you do for us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. That's it. If you vote on the motion, all those, please vote. Counselor Bigger? It's not coming up, but thank you very much, Chief. Okay. Okay, so we're going to minutes of the previous meeting. Do you have a motion, please? Thank you, Counselor Olson, and second to my Counselor Donovan, on the question. All those in favor say aye. Oh, on the question, sorry, Counselor Luck, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just in regards to five point two on the minutes, just earlier, we had discussed in the committee of the whole that if we could add to the minutes just the addition of writing a letter to our MLA and to the Minister of Education in regards to use of community schools for some of our facilities management, that'd be great, thanks.
Floquez, that, just going to add that, so please vote. Motion carried, thank you very much. Item eight, ratification of email poll of two thousand and twenty-five, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, approval of the social pinpoint to engage residents on conceptual options for Gondola Point Road. Our chief administrator, Mr. Watson, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and I won't belabor the point. I recognize that you've already had an email poll and offered opinion here. Just a bit of context, though, is first off, thanks to council for their support of using some new tools to explore more deeply with our community, how we can best gain their perspectives before we move forward with projects. It certainly is our interest in doing so and in doing so comprehensively. That said, it does not, our use of social pinpoint for the Gondola Point Road proposed project does not bind us to social pinpoint specifically as a platform, it's just an exploration. There are similar products available elsewhere. So I would offer that staff will certainly review the experience in using social pinpoint for both the Hampton Road project as well as the proposed Gondola Point Road. And we'll make a recommendation for budget consideration in two thousand and twenty-six. If supported, it would be our recommendation that we pursue a competitive process to select a preferred vendor for the type of consultation that this kind of platform offers. So appreciate the email poll, it's already been completed and that council is supportive. And again, thanks for your support, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would move council ratify the email poll of July twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five, and approve the use of social pinpoint to engage residents on conceptual options for Gondola Point Road at a cost not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars, using available two thousand and twenty-five operational funds and/or general reserves as required.
Okay, thank you. On the question, Counselor Olson, sorry, Counselor, no. On the question? Sorry, move on to correspondence. We're in receipt of the correspondence from two of our residents, Mrs. McLean and Mr. and Mrs. Hicks. And so as welcome tonight, thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts and ideas with us. And so how the process works, we're in receipt of two letters asking to speak, Council. And so the process allows us ten minutes per speaker. I just want to confirm with the Hicks, would you like to have two speakers or one from your household? One speaker from your household, okay? And the other speaker is Ms. McLean. So it's ten minutes each. And so this information will be given to, for council to hear. No decisions are being made tonight, it's just additional information for us to hear as the process is going through. Our developer officer is still gathering information. So this gives us an opportunity for all of us to hear it at one time. And at some point, there will be a motion asking that it be referred to, for a review. Everything we hear tonight will be referred for a review, consultation and follow-up with our development offer, with the consulting engineer and concerned residents. So there will be follow-up. So with that, whichever, if you flipped a coin, which person would like to go first? And if you could state your name and your address, thank you very much. Hi, so welcome. And now, do you have a PowerPoint for, you have it? Okay, we're good, perfect. Okay, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council, thanks so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. As I mentioned, my name is Brittany McLean. I live at forty-five Queensbury Drive, which I've marked out there on that map. So directly adjacent to the proposed Woodley Park Phase Twenty-nine development. My house is next to where the proposed Westridge Road will meet Queensbury Drive, meaning there will be a new ditch alongside my house, where we'll see stormwater flow, and then also in front of my home. I'm here both as a resident and as someone who is taking some significant time to review this application carefully. I have spent several years identifying flood and wildfire risk for municipalities across North America, probably the last person the developer wants living there. But, and I've developed risk mitigation plans for those communities. I also want to reflect the concerns that several neighbors, many of them in attendance here tonight, have raised with the PAC, town staff, members of council and the mayor, and with their fellow community members. I was away during the PAC meeting and the public notice, which was short. However, I reviewed the materials, I spoke with staff, and I compared the plan against the town's standards and bylaws. I also attempted to reach the developer's representative. However, despite their offer during the PAC to speak with residents, I have not received a reply. Other than that, they would reply by August first, it's now August nineteenth. As you know, the PAC gave unanimous support for this development. Yet when I look closely, I saw several risks that were not identified. They weren't identified in the staff report or discussed in detail at the meeting. Further, I spoke with Mr. Colburn, the development officer, when he was on site earlier this month after the PAC. And he shared that he was unsure what the developer's plan would be to protect my property from water flowing down that side with the new ditching. And he also noted the water course flowing downhill into my backyard, above which is planned, some lots with no backyard swales or other protection measures. And I don't mention that to point out the failing of any one person, but to highlight that there is a gap between a project being okayed in principle by the PAC and understanding the ramifications of the project. So it's that gap between what's happening on the ground and what was shared through the process thus far that brings me here tonight. So I'm not anti-development, so in fact, much of my career this past, over the past decade, has been working closely with engineers, planners, developers, many city and town councils across the country to support development that is good for communities. My objective here is not to say whether I think this development should proceed or not. But when I look at the proposed development through my lens of flood and fire risk, it's clear to me that it, there's an atypical risk profile for this site. So that doesn't mean automatically that it should be a no-go, but it does require exploring those risks in depth, weighing the pros and cons, and planning accordingly. So what I want to do is outline risks that from my perspective were overlooked during the process thus far, and suggests that council deserves a more balanced and complete picture when making decisions. So those decisions, of course, they affect residents, they affect the town finances, and long-term safety. I say this with the utmost respect to council, I'm sure you're all very intelligent people and fair people, but you have broad profiles, and I'm sure busy schedules, and you rely on well-balanced information coming to you. So and I'm not convinced that that happened in this process thus far.
That's fine. And I would just ensure that everything that we transpire here tonight is respectful of our staff in an open session, and that we can look at all the pros and cons of, and come to, you know, a nice conversation about how we can make the best possible development for our community.
I apologize if I'm coming off as disrespectful.
No, 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 that, thank you very much, please continue.
I'm just trying to point out the things that, you know, struck me in the process. And it's not about the people that are involved in the process, as you'll see as I continue, it's about the process itself. So what struck me most about this subdivision plan is that I think it has an atypical risk profile compared to most applications. So we're talking about a very steep slope well beyond town standards. We're talking about stormwater risks due to the slope and the capacity issues already present on Queensbury Drive. And these risks being compounded by climate change. We're also talking about safety and maintenance implications that will affect the town for years to come. And what I noticed is that this isn't flagged in the staff report, and I'm not saying that that is staff's fault. But there's no risk section in the report, there's nothing to suggest council should pause and weigh the trade-offs. And when I have worked with other municipalities across this country, staff reports typically assess, you know, at a minimum, the risk to public safety, municipal finances, community well-being, and the environment. So those are typically done on a risk scale, much like the chief had just shown us. So further, staff did raise that they were unsure about the proposal meeting stormwater standards at the PAC meeting. The PAC made their recommendation without confirmation and made no mention of this, confirming this in their motion. So, you know, I do find that piece problematic. And again, that matters, because council should have that full and balanced information that we're not sure if it does meet the standard. So it does sort of make it feel, from where I'm sitting, that approval is the default outcome. When the notice periods are short, as they were in this case, when risk isn't addressed or even identified, and when developers can begin work before council, as the voice of the community has its say, it does undermine some confidence in the process. So I see again, in the staff report that was submitted for this evening's meeting, that the developer can't proceed work until the development officer is satisfied with the information the developer provides. But again, that can still proceed before the council vote. And I would consider that an anomaly amongst the municipalities I have worked with. So my concern is bigger than just the application. It's about whether the approval process is really set up to give council what you need to make a good balanced decision for the community. And it's about whether policies or practices that may have worked for the community in the past still work in a time of rapid growth, in a changing community, on development, on scarce land. Sorry, I'm losing my voice, in imperfect locations and in a changing climate. But setting that larger issue aside for the moment, I would like to share with you briefly what was in my letter and the components that I feel, that I believe contribute to this particular proposed development having an atypical risk profile. So it is the one hundred and eighty meters of roadway that is at a twelve percent gradient, which exceeds, of course, the maximum in the subdivision bylaw and exceeds the PAC's variance authority. According to the subdivision bylaw, once you pass six percent in-ground stormwater infrastructure is required, but here, no such infrastructure is included, open ditches are proposed. So the plan not only exceeds standards, it does so without the safeguards that those standards were meant to trigger. On a slope like this, runoff velocity is about twenty percent higher than an eight percent, increasing the risk of erosion and stormwater system bypass. While the developer claims their methods will improve flows, this is untested in our community in this context. The few other roads that are at a twelve percent mostly flow directly into the Kennebec cases. And yet there have still been presentations to council over the years about flooding and sewer backup during storm events in those locations. So in addition, from my understanding, the net improvement that the developer claims is based on a comparison to the, sorry, is based on a comparison to the current raw land. The standard, you know, speaking with engineers, would be using the natural state, which is forested, as a baseline for her comparison. And it also does not address the potential for runoff via the roadway during high-intensity events. So these risks are also compounded by climate trends. And the town requires design for a one-to-one-hundred-year storm plus twenty percent, but no one seems to know yet whether this plan meets that. We do know that storms that used to be rare are now happening more often, and one-hour maximum rainfall could increase by twenty percent in our local area. So approving infrastructure that is already underdesigned in a location with a slope into an area that already sees issues during high-intensity events sets us up for real challenges. I will skip ahead from safety and tree impacts, those are included in my letter. But what I would request of council, having heard this information, is just to, you know, leave with you four questions. From a business perspective, does this development make financial sense to the town, given the higher maintenance cost and potential for infrastructure failures? From a risk perspective, do the potential benefits outweigh the risks? From a community perspective, whom does this development benefit? Will it be good for new and existing residents, and is it in the spirit of the Community Planning Act? And from a process perspective, does the approval process truly provide council with the information you need to make good decisions for our growing community?
Thank you very much for your presentation, very detailed, thank you for your time and we'll ask for the next speaker to come up. Would be Mrs. Hicks or Mr. Hicks? Thank you very much. If you could state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Rick Hicks, uh, and I'm here with my wife Paulette Hicks. Uh, we reside, we've resided at forty-three Queensberry Drive for over twenty-five years. Uh, we've chosen to build our lives in this community. Uh, I will not restate the serious risks outlined in Brittany's uh letter and presentation this evening. As an expert, she detailed the threats posed um, by the proposed subdivision, including flooding, fire protection, erosion and other safety concerns. These are not just worries, um, they are real dangers to our homes, neighborhoods and Quisbancis as a whole. Instead, I'd like to focus a little bit on procedural shortcomings in the Town Planning Division and uh, Planning Advisory Committee, PAC. From an outsider's perspective, the presentation by town planner Dwight Colburn and Friar's excavation engineering firm appeared premature and rushed, um, especially given that very little time was given, was afforded to the residents um, to prepare and respond, not to mention it was mailed out in a year-long weekend.
Mr. Hicks, can I just ask you to hold one, your thought for one moment, I just need to confer with the CEO on, on, on a procedure?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hicks, I just wanted to make sure, I wasn't sure, um, I wanted to make sure on PAC's procedure.
Okay.
And they follow the Community Planning Act, so I'm sure the pr- procedure, to the best of my knowledge, was pr- um, correct, so you can continue, thank you.
Also, not only do the residents not have a lot of time to respond, um, and why I'm saying this seems rushed, the fire chief had not yet responded to the inquiry regarding a twelve percent grade, given that your bylaws say eight with a maximum PAC committee able to uh authorize ten. Uh, also, there's a requirement for a comprehensive water source and supply assessment and that was not yet completed. Both Isaiah Reed's statement, and he's the representative from the engineering firm, um, is at the twelve minute fifty second mark of the PAC uh meeting recording and Mr. Colburn's report referenced a prior PAC approval for the subdivision in twenty sixteen. If that's the case, uh, why aren't the fire chief's input and water assessment already on hand? If this has already been approved back in two thousand and sixteen, it just seems odd that these, what I would deem as important factors uh are not available at this point. Why, I mean, why ask PAC to recommend approval without this critical information? It feels much like putting the cart before the horse, from my perspective. I also wanted to address the term net zero, a stormwater management. It's a term we heard quite often. As a twenty-five-year resident of Queensberry Drive, I can personally attest to the dramatic increase in water flow down uh Queensberry Drive, uh, the ditch in front of our property. It was nothing when we first moved there like it is now. Mr. Colburn uh has attributed these surges to other developments uh in the area, not Phase twenty-eight and the proposed twenty-nine. If net zero is truly the goal, then the modeling relied upon is clearly, in my opinion, unreliable and flawed. Consider this analogy, in a courtroom, both sides bring expert witnesses, you see it all the time. They both have ex- expert witnesses and they have polar opposite uh submissions. So here, the developer hires an engineering consultant to model stormwater management and that report becomes the primary basis for the planner's recommendation to, to PAC. Even if internal engineering reviews are also consulted, in my opinion, the process remains inherently biased and inadequate, as evidenced by the escalating water flows we're enduring uh from, from prior developments. Does not seem to be uh net zero, well, not seem, i- it isn't. Uh, let me illustrate our growing frustration with uh, with an example. Following the PAC meeting on July the eighth, um, those in, in attendance from Queensberry Drive met with Isaiah Reed, uh, the planning manager from Friar's Engineering Firm, who assured us multiple times that he's available to answer any questions that we have at any point in time. Brittany submitted detailed questions with promised responses, she mentioned by August the first. Nothing has, uh, has been received to date. Uh, a subsequent meeting in person uh with Mr. Colburn uh did not yield um much in terms of answers. We were hoping for something substantive uh in terms of solutions or responses. The lack of transparency only deepens our unease. Uh, we respectfully urge you to put yourself in our position. If you lived on Queensberry Drive, given what's been presented, especially through uh Brittany, who's an expert in this area, would you feel secure proceeding uh with this development amid these uh unresolved risks? We should not have to gamble with preventative damage to our homes, properties and community. So to close, given the existing water flow challenges um plaguing Queensberry Drive residents, uh, this is not a routine develop- or, or a routine development, if such a thing exists. On behalf of Paulette and myself, uh, we fully endorse Brittany's expert analysis and urge you as our elected officials to pri- prioritize the safety and well-being of Queensberry Drive residents. Please suspend this processed development until an independent engineering firm thoroughly investigates and reports on the risk. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hicks. So, um, I just, I have to catch up here, the ti- time's out on me. So that brings a conclusion, we had um two requests to speak and both um have spoken. So I'd like to thank you very much for coming and sharing your knowledge and your expertise with us. Um, it doesn't go unnoticed and, but I'd also like to thank our, our staff and our uh development officer, Mr. Colburn, for the time on the uh file and the PAC. Um, everybody does things with um the, the best of the, that we can to make the process run correctly and smoothly. So at this point, um, I would like to, um, as I'd mentioned earlier, that we will put a motion forward um, asking that um correspondence from the Queensberry residents concerning the Woodley public, or Woodley Park subdivision, Phase twenty-nine be referred to staff for review, this is an ongoing dialogue, consultation and follow-up with the developer, consulting enginein- engineer and concerns, concerned residents, being yourselves, and report back to council at a subsequent meeting. If I could have a motion to that effect, Counselor Miller.
Uh, well, I was gonna make a, a comment, but I guess I'll get the motion so I can do the comment, oh. I'll move, oh, sorry, my iPad just, oh, came back. Correspondence from the Queensberry Drive residents uh be, concerning Woodley Sub- Park subdivision Phase twenty-nine, twenty-nine be referred to staff for review, cons- consultation and follow-up with the developer, consulting engineer and concerned residents and report back to council at a subsequent meeting.
Seconded by Counselor Thompson, Sylvia, okay? On the question, Counselor Miller, you had a question for, okay, yes, please.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, and thank you to everybody. And thank you especially to uh, to Rick and Brittany, sorry for using first names there, for, for coming up and, and um, and setting forth a presentation. Uh, it definitely is not the first one you've done and uh it was very detailed and, 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 and very informative. I think there's just a couple of things that we gotta make sure is uh, I don't know if you read the staff report, no work has started, so that won't start until we go through the end here. Um, you had some great points about the one in twenty, one year plus twenty, twenty percent. Uh, there, the mailings, you know, listening to what you just stated and the way the post office has been, at least in the last three to five months, is maybe something that should be changed in our bylaws, should be three, four weeks out, four weeks out versus ten days, uh, because special, ignore the, the, the holidays for a second, things just aren't going as quick as, as they used to be. Um, I'm very familiar with your, your plight, unfortunately, I'm the one upstream that, that moved there twenty-four years ago, so I, I know a lot of people that are out there and, and, and down there and my cousin down there too. And the town has also already spent in the last few years tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars already trying to mitigate some of the challenges. So it's something significant, water, and of course, our fire chief is here, fire is important, but water's becoming a, a ma- major challenge, so I think we need to look at that and a little side note, I think we should also, uh, as I walk my dog and go around different community houses, I still see a lot of drainage from your roof going straight into the ditch, which shouldn't be happening for some people either, so. Um, that's a side note, not necessarily on this, but with, with all the water going down there, it makes a big difference. So I, I do appreciate the time and effort and, and as a group, for everybody coming up here and presenting such a, a great uh thing. And I know our staff and, and PAC will, are still waiting for some answers as well from, from not just the fire chief, but from the developer and, and I guess you guys are too, but definitely our, our staff, so. Um, I just wanted to thank you and know that, uh, appreciate you, you coming out here, so thanks.
Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would like to thank uh, the Hicks and Brittany very much for the presentation. I think that uh, it's quite an education process to read all of that in paper, down on paper. And it certainly addresses some of the new uh constraints that we as a councilors, any municipality is, has to deal with now because the storm uh frequencies and intensities have all, have all been revised over the years. And I know that we have consequently uh had to go back and, and fix certain areas because of the intensity of storms and things like that. So uh, I'm, I'm concerned with the twelve percent, I'm concerned with the net zero runoff uh impacts. And so, and I think uh, a concern also is the lack of, of a consultant uh reviewing the present uh situation on behalf of the residents or in comparing, comparing uh the, the information for both sides, if you want to call it that, um, of the proposal. Uh, so I think that there's uh, our staff would look forward to receiving that additional information and and as, as we all here on the horseshoe can attest to, they do, they do those evaluations in the best interest of our community. So hopefully that will come up and clarify some of the questions that are being raised tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Olson, and next in queue is Counselor Luck and then Counselor Biggar. Counselor Luck.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, I thank you again to Ms. McLean and Mr. and Mrs. Hicks. Um, again, the information was very thorough and really appreciate you bringing this to our attention. I know that our homes are one of the biggest investments we make in our life. And uh, you know, again, we want, we want to do it right, and I think as a, you know, as a town and council, we support development, but again, we want to make sure it's done right. Um, I have been witness to some of the water issues, um, walking on Queensberry quite often and uh, you know, again, that's before anything happens. And I also live at the bottom of the world, or at least the bottom of Quisbancis. So in terms of seeing the um, the issues when you get into higher grades, um, and we live in winter, you know, five to six months a year, so like the twelve percent grade does concern me quite a bit. Um, I'm not gonna repeat everything that Counselor Miller or Counselor Olson said, but I um concur with them. Um, and I also am quite curious about the open ditches when it is the higher percentage as well. Um, I guess the one question I did have is in terms of process. Um, I know that we've made the motion to um, you know, get more information, but I guess more so from my own um ability to sleep at night, and I'm sure for them, I'm just wondering what kind of the process looks like, I just kind of want, um, so I'm wondering, I guess, through the deputy mayor to Mr. Colburn in terms of PAC has approved it, like, what is the process at this point? And I just want kind of assurances that it is coming back to us to have more discussion and what does that look like, thank you.
Mr. Colburn, um, could you answer Counselor Luck's question about the process? I think I have the process under hand, but I want to make sure that you answered.
Thank you for the question through you, Deputy Mayor, to Counselor Luck. So the process of where this file currently stands is this, this project, in terms of an approval from the development officer, has not been approved. Subdivisions under the Community Planning Act, when they either create streets or land for public purposes, come to the Planning Advisory Committee as part of that process for their review. The Planning Advisory Committee does not approve subdivisions. The Planning Advisory Committee makes recommendations to development officer as well as to council. Those recommendations in terms of, from PAC, are followed under the Community Planning Act. The, the proposed subdivision is it keeping in line with the intent of the Community Planning Act, with in terms of subdivision bylaws? They also look at the street layout with due regard for topog- for the topography. They also look at connectivity to adjoining subdivisions. They look at the overall development, they look at, is it producing future development in that particular area? So there are a number of factors that take into consideration. Based on that, they make a recommendation to the development officer. So it's the development officer under the Community Planning Act that approves the subdivision, tentatively. Final ascent of a subdivision as well as the acceptance rests with council. So one tentative approval is given, the, the process in the Community Planning Act is developer engages a consulting engineer then to start doing the engine, engineering design phase. In accordance with the framework as laid out in a subdivision bylaw that's approved by council. So we review subdivisions based on the subdivision specs and guidelines, as well as the bylaw, to see, to ensure that it aligns with provisions therein. The current subdivision bylaw stipulates that council, that PAC can, can grant a variance up to ten percent. And this, it also says that the design shall be done in accordance with the standards of the subdivision specifications and guidelines, as well as the subdivision bylaw, unless otherwise stipulated by council. In this particular case, there's a request for a twelve percent street grade. In order for the development officer to approve the tentative subdivision plan and to issue development permits for the commencement of work, it has to come before council, which it has not yet done. That was indicated to PAC. In order to come to council, to ask council to accept or to permit a street grade of twelve percent, there would be a presentation to council that would outline some of the risks that have been mentioned here tonight, stormwater, operations in terms of fire services, all those things would be laid out before council, so council would have the necessary information to make the reasonable decision whether twelve percent is acceptable. Now, if council were to say, we don't accept twelve percent, the developer has the opportunity to step back and say, okay, I'll make a ten percent grade. So then we have to look at what does that look like? Does that look all of a sudden a filling in areas, raising roads, what are the impacts there? Does that mean getting into um excavation, or in some cases, the breaking of rock to lower it down to ten percent, so all of those factors come into play? Which would be presented to council, when this comes to council to ask for the, the approval based on a twelve percent grade? So right now, where this sits is I've, we've reached out to the, to the, to the consulting engineer who is, as noted in the agenda and in the package, is present tonight, uh, regarding that information. I would like to clarify and to, regarding the stormwater management plan, in my presentation to council, I indicated that the design brief and the design did not clearly state whether it was one in one hundred years plus twenty percent. I can confirm that we did reach out to the developer through the engineering department and the design is actually one in one hundred, one in one hundred years plus twenty percent plus um data, which basically is scaled out to twenty fifty-one, which is based on the City of St. John's stormwater guidelines, which is what we refer to and we refer to for these designs. So that is the information that would be coming to, to council through this process. So where it sits through you, Deputy Mayor, is that it has not been approved. We are working with stakeholders to bring the most reasonable information to council. to mitigate risk as has been indicated. So council could make that decision and offer recommendations or guidance back to staff that would go through that process. So council has multiple op- multiple opportunities to accept or reject an application. When a tentative plan is, when a tentative subdivision plan is approved and the design, and the developer moves forward with the design and construction, the developers ultimately, in some cases, at their own risk because council could come back and say, well, there are certain issues, so we're not going to accept it. Part of that also includes a development agreement, which outlines the terms and conditions that they must follow. They also put up security to guarantee that the work is going to be done. Should a developer fail to do the work, council has the authority to request caching of the security to complete the work. Once council grants is sent to a subdivision plan, it gets registered, creates lots, building permits can be issued. Some of the information that is required in order to issue those permits are things like groundwater assessments, comprehensive source supply assessments. So it is the developer's risk in terms of whether they do that upfront prior to submitting tentative approvals, or do they do it prior to getting building permits? So there is that flexibility in the process. Once all the work is done and you've met construction completion standards, there's a one-year warranty period, basically, that once everything is done, the development sits in terms of operationally for one year. If there's any deficiencies, the developer is on the hook to go back and fix those deficiencies. As tonight in the agenda, it's actually a couple of on the, on the agenda, final acceptance. Those are subdivisions that have been completed. They've, they've passed their one-year warranty. There have been no issues in terms of deficiencies or anything with the infrastructure that has to be addressed. So that is another opportunity for council to actually accept the infrastructure so it becomes under the onus of the municipality to maintain and to be their town asset. So there are multiple opportunities in this process where council has the, the authority and the opportunity to accept. A long-winded response to the question of where it sits is currently not approved. It's coming to council on a future date to request whether they would wish to move forward under the authority of the subdivision bylaw to permit a 12% grade. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. And that was a very thorough answer and I much appreciate it. You wanted one follow-up? Yes, yes. Go ahead, Counselor Luck.
I think I lost it.
There we go.
Sorry, I just said. You're not helping, Mary. Oh, sorry. Okay, my question is, thank you for that very explicit information, is i- in the past, like I know this is a variance, so would it come back as a public hearing? I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity for the community to weigh in or speak again to it similar to, that was, I guess, I didn't know if it's just coming back to us or will it come back to us in a form of a public hearing where the community is allowed to weigh in on like, once they have more information? Or is it just kind of a, a motion or a topic on the agenda? If you could clarify that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Colburn, please.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. So it would come to, it would come to council as a request. There isn't a established public hearing process under the Community Plan Act or under subdivision bylaws. Council has the authority, should they wish to reach out to residents to gather more information. That is part of the PAC process. They get notified. Residents have the opportunity to express those concerns to the planning advisory committee, which come into consideration in terms of their recommendations. Planning advisory committee has authority under the Community Planning Act and has a harms line committee of council that if they receive that information and they have questions and concerns, they have the authority to say, we require additional information. We'd like to table this or defer this decision until such time. So they have those same sort of authorities and, and opportunities as presented to council. So we present from a staff perspective, we present the information that we have, we, based on the review in accordance with the subdivision bylaw and specs. And then they make recommendations based on how they receive the information or if they need additional information. So this will come back to council. It will be presented. Council has the authority, obviously, as part of this process. We would be providing any additional information that we received to address the concerns that were presented here tonight in the interest of fairness. Also through you, Deputy Mayor, to Counselor Luck and to council, as I mentioned previously, the engineer, engineering firm is present. Should he wish to speak tonight, I would put that forward and leave it to him, or obviously they can come back at a, as a subsequent time and present those, their position based on the concerns that are represented. And I would put that forward as sort of a interest in fairness in terms of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Before I ask engineer firm, Counselor Bigger has been waiting patiently. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. I, I don't, I don't know that my comments will add much value here, which is a sentiment probably shared by my fellow counselors often when I speak. I just wanted to say thank you very much to the residents for speaking tonight, Ms. and Mr. Hicks and Ms. McLean. And I'm really appreciative that you have availed yourselves of the process here to come and to speak freely and with great insight and great kind of personal, you know, fervor, I guess you might say. As Counselor Luck points out, I mean, people's homes are generally the greatest investment they make. And I hope that, that the conversation tonight will reiterate, I guess, the commitment as stewards that I think we have as council to and mayor to, and staff frankly, to, of course, to responsibly look at growth and development in the town. Ms. McLean, you had mentioned that you had a concern, I think you said it in your letter, that there's a default setting almost of approve related to projects. I, I don't accept that. I, I understand your concern and I don't dismiss your, your concerns as such, but especially with the insight provided just now by our planning and services manager, development manager. I really do believe that there is a strong effort made to kind of really understand the risks and concerns that are before us. A term that gets used a lot these days is disruption, you know, related to things have gone along for a period of time, in some cases, maybe decades in various contexts. And then something happens that disrupts the way that things have kind of always been, you know? And I think that there are a lot of opportunities that we have through this review to consider some of that and that I think, for example, a very quick example would be, as Counselor Miller even pointed out, perhaps the 10-day notification process related to hearings and, and meetings around these kinds of developments. Maybe that doesn't quite cut the mustard going forward, you know? And perhaps a disruption of this nature where you come forward and you express your thoughts and concerns so aptly, you know, is, is something, it's something that we will of course need to take into consideration. Sometimes it's easy for us, as you point out, there's a broad profile, a law, a broad purview of, of concerns and, and things that we're managing, trying to manage. And perhaps sometimes it's just a little too easy to look at best practices of other jurisdictions or other municipalities and say, well, that's, that's what happens everywhere else, so that's okay for us. You know, not that anyone's being flippant, I'm not trying to say that, but you know, a little deeper dive on some of that, some review. We actually just had a meeting earlier, earlier about a number of policies and processes that are under review for us as a, as a council and as a town. So I do believe we take it seriously. I hope that, I hope that this will provide you with some assurance, I guess. I don't expect you to be convinced maybe of anything just yet or happy. And when I first ran for council, this is only my first term, but when I was approached about maybe considering it, I remember saying to our now mayor, when she challenged me to consider it, I said, I don't, that's all like culverts and, and ditches and, you know, curbs and property setbacks and puddles and I don't know anything about that, you know? And she challenged me a little bit about that and I have learned so much over my time here. And I've greatly relied upon the insight and the expertise of our wonderful staff again and again. But not only is it that, I just want to say, this is sort of my little kumbaya moment and I'll be quiet after this. It's not just the expertise that they bring that gives me confidence. It's also the, I guess, the, the goodwill that they have and the commitment that I see on a regular basis to, again, being good stewards of the responsibilities they have to properly manage and help a town that has enjoyed above-average growth for many, many years. We, growth has not been a problem in our town, generally speaking. We're very blessed in this regard. And it has, it presents its own challenges by virtue of, some towns wish they had the measure of growth maybe that we enjoy here. There's an added component of complexity around the rate of growth that we've enjoyed. I think you've brought forward very important points and I just am very appreciative of the reality that this has not been brought before council yet for us to consider this variance. As you point out, it's anomalous, you know, considering what is the standard and even what is the standard variance for PAC. But I'm really appreciative of the reality that the ongoing review has not yet been confirmed. The, the, the project is not confirmed and there's quite a few hurdles to cross yet. And so anyway, I, I just wanted to say, I appreciate you coming forward and I'm, I'm grateful for the chance to review it. And I'm appreciative of your very respectful demeanor and attitudes tonight as well. Thank you very much for that, yeah. It's a great town we live in.
Thank you, Mr. Bigger. Counselor Bigger, sorry. Just on if, would council be okay if Mr. Tool, Tool spoke? Who's the engineer? Do you want to take it to a vote? Would you like to put a motion for it?
Engineer to present if he so wishes. That would be my motion. I think we're required to.
Second? All those in second by Counselor Luck, all those in favor? Motion carried. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your whole name. If you could state your name and who you represent and this will be more information for all of us. Thank you.
Andrew Tool with Donmar Surveys and Engineering. Andrew Tool, Donmar Surveys and Engineering. Andrew Tool, Donmar Surveys and Engineering. Sorry, I don't have any presentation. I wasn't expecting to speak, but I, I would say like, I want to address the residents and say, I'm sorry. Obviously something broke down because Isaiah, I found out like two days ago that he promised a bunch of stuff. I found out when Mr. Colburn asked me to address that presentation that you have in front of you. So we went back through that. I feel like the problem here is optics and I know that some of you may not agree, but the problem here is optics because when I read through all that, I feel like our design addresses this. It, our, one of the challenges is that typically the engineering design is directed to town staff. It's not directed to PAC and it's not directed to council. It's an engineer working with an engineer. So we don't present this in the sense that, like we're trying to address every, every, how do I say this correctly? That we're not trying to address every item that may come up, which one engineer looked or another engineer looking at it would obviously immediately see that this is okay. And I, and I'm not saying that that's, that means it's okay. But so I feel like in this case, obviously you guys didn't get the answers you need. So I'll go back with you after this and discuss whatever you want. But I do feel like one clarification, we talked about the 100 plus 20% being a town standard. Actually, the town doesn't have a standard. So the standard is we typically look to St. John and say, whatever they do, try and do that, which is actually only 100. So we've had several other developments like this where stormwater is a problem and we have proactively gone and said, what is, so St. John's guidelines were developed in 2011, so it's old data and it's 100 years of old data. We've moved that forward and then applied climate change to it to take it to 2051 so that we have real data. But, so it's not because Q100 plus 20 and maybe I get too technical, isn't the answer. That means there's actually more rain. The issue isn't more rain, it's more intensity. We get the same amount of rain. In fact, if you look at our one in 100 year storm in our storm that's with climate change and the other one, they're within a millimeter of the same amount of rain. The problem is it happens really fast. So that's what changes. I, I feel like there's no question this is a challenging situation in this area. One of the challenges is that, and we've heard about residents who've lived there for 25 years ago, I would ask you to go back in your minds 25 years. Had you ever even heard the word stormwater management then? I would say probably not because there's areas in the States where they were starting to be kind of where we are, starting to try and implement something, but it was a new science. So there's been years and years of development with no stormwater management. So there's definitely problems. All those trees went away. So the challenge is we're coming in, trying to make that situation better, but we can't fix it. We can't make this better, right? Like this has been years and years of development where there's no management of stormwater. It's just trying to get it down the street. But our storms are also getting worse. And this is, you're, you have this in every municipality on every street. It's everywhere. So what we do is we look at the development that we're concerned with and we make sure that for all the different storms, we're actually making that better. So, and, and you know, better is relative term, but so we make sure that our velocities are not getting increased, our peak flows leaving the site are not increasing at the various points. But so it means that what you would see if we didn't do this development versus if we do the development would not be any change. But that doesn't mean you don't, your problems go away, right? If you have existing problems, there's still going to be an existing problem. So I think that, like, that's very important to understand that. Another challenge is that this is phase 29 of a subdivision. So there was a plan done back before all the standards we have today. This is what's left. This is all there is, right? These two streets were drawn, I'm going to say 40 years ago, that, that, like where you lived 25 years ago, that was one of the early phases of this development. And this street was on that same concept plan and it was always planned to be in this location at 25%, or at 12%. So one of the challenges is we can't go back to phase 25 and change everything from 25 forward. There's houses on those lots. So, so it makes it very challenging. We can change to 10%, but one of the challenges is it actually makes a much less safe intersection. My recommendation as an engineer is build that 120, 180 meters of 12% and have proper stopping before you hit the stop sign instead of coming into the stop sign at 10%. But we, we have some stuff, we'll address that when it finally comes. Just trying to think if there's other things written, points that were in that. One of the questions about open ditch, why is it open ditch? We have, everything in the area is open ditch and, and the request was can we match that? We've, this is not, I, I know that the new subdivision bylaws says anything over 6%, but we've developed a number of streets since then over 6% with open ditch, if that's the character of the neighborhood. And we put measures in place like riprap lining, plunge pools, dams that slow the water down and maintain it through that. And if the, if it's built properly, it works fine. If there's questions, I'll gladly answer them, but I, I just feel like it's important that we kind of show both sides. One, one comment I would make that having independent review, like, and I'm, I'm not opposed to independent review, if you want to do that, that's great. But this is, this is very different than the court case example where the town has set standards and the question is, did we meet the standards, yes or no? And, and so the town reviews this, their, their engineers review this and make sure that we're meeting the standards, like we're not, this isn't a, we're an advocate for the developer. Obviously, we're working for the developer, they're paying our bill, but there is standards we're going to meet. So I hope that helps tell the story a little bit better.
Thank you very much for your contribution to the conversation. We appreciate it. I know it was last minute, you weren't planned to be up here, but testament to you wanting to make, let's find a solution. That's what we can do. Again, I'd like to say thank you very much. At this stage, the approval of Woodley Park Phase 29 remains pending. The proposed development has been reviewed by the Planning Advisory Committee and recommendations provided to the development officer. However, the development officer's decision has not yet been rendered as additional information has been requested of the consulting engineer and the street grade requires the approval of council. Again, I'd like to thank the residents for bringing all your concerns and your data and your knowledge to the table. I'd like to thank the engineering firm. I'd like to thank the engineering firm for also bringing your data, your data and information to the table. I think this has created an environment now where there could be a free flow of information. Thank you for the apology for the error. I know it takes a lot to stand up and say, you know, I, I'm sorry. And I want, we want to move forward and we want to make things... Thank you to the staff, Mr. Colburn for everything, your due diligence on this file, and to the PAC. And with that, we are, bring this, we had a motion, we have a vote. Please vote now. Thank you. And after the vote, then we'll be finished this portion of the agenda. Thank you very much. Please vote. Oh, I, I'm probably logged out, Amelia.
Yeah, you're good?
Yeah. So, that's motion carried. So, they're going to report back to council. So, thank you very much and have a pleasant evening. Maybe you can still enjoy some music or stay with us and enjoy. Okay, we're on to number 10, proposed bylaw. So, this is on the, okay, proposed bylaw. Okay, I'm with you. I'm just, just give me a moment, please, to just catch up. Get right with you, okay. Okay, so, proposed council code of conduct bylaw 068. This is consideration of third and final reading. Could someone please put a motion forward? Thank you, Councilor Thompson.
I move third and final reading. I need a second.
It's, um...
Do I need a second before I do that or do I just go ahead?
You, you need to read the motion?
Okay.
Please.
Whereas a public notice has been published on the Townequus Pemesis website pursuant to Section 153 and 154 of the Local Governance Act describing bylaw number 068 and a bylaw of the Townequus Pemesis respecting council code of conduct and whereas proposed bylaw 068 receive first and second reading on May 20th, 2025. Now therefore be resolved that third and final reading be given to bylaw number 068, a bylaw of the Townequus Pemesis respecting council code of conduct enacted this 19th day of August, 2025 and the code of conduct bylaw number 056 be repealed.
Thank you, Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Olson on the question. Seeing there is none, please vote now. Motion carried. Number 10B, proposed zoning bylaw. This is subject Cedar Ridge Water Main Extension. Approval for consultant to proceed to part B and part C.
The second proposed bylaw amendment.
Oh, okay, sorry, we're backing up to the, the, the last one. We needed, why do we need it? Oh, this one, I missed this, sorry, sorry, double-sided. Okay, Councilor Luck, please.
I, I'd like to move that council refers zoning bylaw amendment 038-52 to the PAC for the review and comments concerning the amendment to Table 3 and to set a public hearing date for September 16th, 2025.
Seconded by Councilor Donovan.
Correct.
On the question. Counselor Miller? Nope. All those in favor, please vote. Motion carried. Okay, so now we're on to the other one. So, are we? Yes. Okay, this is FCM, Asset Management Climate Change Grant Funding. May I have a motion? Counselor Baker, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Be resolved that Mayor and Council of the Townequus Pemesis directs staff to confirm the town's funding commitment level of $52,000 in the requested format with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Local Leadership for Climate Adaptation Program for Development of an Enterprise-Wide Asset Management Plan and Climate Adaption Strategy and Policy for Pemesis. That's a mouthful.
Counselor Miller on the question?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I guess my question through you, I'm guessing to the CAO. Originally, we planned 75,000. Now, we're going to do 122, so it's been enhanced significantly because now we're getting $70,000 from FCM. I guess my question is, because we have to put the 52 in, I get it. So, we're going from 75 to 122 to make sure that we're more robust. I guess my question's on the remaining 23. It says we'll do some more in-depth assessments, I guess. My question is, what is that and why wouldn't we just keep that? Because there's a lot of other things this year that we're going over that we'd put that towards those other items that are going over budget. So, I guess there's no, it doesn't definitively say the difference we're doing from 75 to 122 and then we're adding another 23 to make it 145, basically. So, I'm just trying to understand, almost doubling of it, and what's the difference? Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. To Mr. Watson, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, through you, to Counselor Miller and others. Yeah, you're quite right, Counselor Miller. By virtue of us having originally budgeted $75,000 in the 2025 operating budget for this project, but now only needing 52 of that, it does allow us $23,000 in the budget for specific areas of asset management that is not covered here. That said, none of those funds have been committed to asset management today. So, I think it's up to staff to just do a review and determine what, if anything, in 2025 is appropriately applied to enhance the asset management piece. If we can, I think we should. But that said, if it's, if there's no tangible benefit to be had by spending that additional 23,000 or that within-budget 23,000 this year, then it would be retained as a potential operational surplus or applied to other areas of overage.
We'll take the vote now. Motion carried. So, next we're on to subject 2025 TQ08, 15 Cedar Ridge Water Main Extension. Approval for consultant to proceed to part B and part C. So, there's two, two recommendations here on your... It looks like it's one, but it's actually two. We broke it down to two. Recommendation is council direct CBCCL. And then it says as a second recommendation. Does everyone see that? So, could I have a motion for the first one, please? Counselor Olson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'd move council direct CBCCL Limited to proceed to part B of tender 2025 TQ08-15, Cedar Ridge Water Main Extension. Detailed design and tender preparation for the revised upset fee of $39,932.50 plus HST.
Seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Seeing there is none, please vote. Motion carried, 7-0. And Counselor Donovan on the second recommendation? Oh, sorry.
Thank you. I'd move that council direct CBCCL Limited to proceed to part C of tender 2025 TQ08-15, Cedar Ridge Water Main Extension. Tender period contract administration and inspection for the upset fee of $153,340 plus HST.
Thank you very much, Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question. Seeing there is none, Counselor Olson on the question?
Yes. No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Seeing there's no questions, please vote.
Just Counselor Thompson.
Counselor Thompson? Oh, we got you.
Yep.
Catch up to you. Okay, so we're moving on to number 11C. Did I have the right one? Oh, sorry, okay. C, this is King's View Subdivision Phase 19, Schooner Point Development Limited. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Donovan.
Whereas the developer has satisfied the minimum requirements in accordance with subdivision bylaw number 035 and the developer's agreement, it would be appropriate for council to grant final acceptance of the King's View Subdivision Phase 19. In addition, we recommend that council approve release of the $28,709.10 bonding to Schooner Point Development Limited.
Seconded by Counselor Thompson on the question. Seeing there is none, please vote. Motion carried. Thank you very much. On to Fernwood Park Phase 3B, JP Customs Homes Limited. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Olson? Oh, so sorry, Counselor Olson.
Whereas the developer has satisfied the minimum requirements in accordance with subdivision bylaw 035 and the developer's agreement, it would be appropriate for council to grant final acceptance of the Fernwood Phase, Fernwood Park Phase 3B subdivision. In addition, we recommend that council approve release of the $16,375.35 bonding to JB Customs Homes Limited.
Thank you very much. Seconded by Counselor Baker. On the question. Seeing there is none, please vote. Motion carried, 7-0. So, Serenity Heights Property Star Inc. I'm just not seeing the motion. Does somebody else have the motion coming up? Okay, Counselor, Counselor Luck, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'd like to move that whereas the developer has satisfied the minimum requirements in accordance with subdivision bylaw 035 and the developer's agreement, it would be appropriate for council to grant final acceptance for the Serenity Heights Phase 1B subdivision. In addition, we recommend that council approve release of the $25,369,065 bonding to Property Star Inc.
Seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Seeing there is none, please vote now. Motion carried, 7-0. So, on this one, we have a tender for Millennium Drive Street Infrastructure Improvement Recommendation. And I will turn that tender over to Mr. Watson for your review and entertain a motion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and through you to members of council. Yep, I refer you to the staff report from Gary with respect to the recommendation to proceed with the low bid of $1,091,608.75 for Galbraith Construction. Formal motion, I'm sure, is in your package. But this is reflective of our commitment to continue the Millennium Drive work and this year of Route 119 to Market Street.
Counselor Luck?
Yes, I can make the motion and then I have a question. Sorry, I'm just waiting for it to open. Okay. I'll move that council were tender 2025 TQ07-14, Millennium Driver Surfacing Project to Galbraith Construction for $1,091,608.75 plus HST. And further, that unaccounted for overage for the project will be addressed through a reallocation of unused operating funds, used 2025 street capital funds or reallocation of reserve funds at the end of 2025.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, worship. I threw you to, I think it would be Mr. Colburn, I'm thinking. I just have a question on, it says, "The town has shortened the limits of the scope of work slightly from original design so that we could more closely match the allocated budget." So, is this still going all the way to Market? And, and my second question, I believe originally last year, when we were supposed to do it, we're also going to be doing Market at the same time. So, just trying to get a clarification. Is it still going all the way to Market? Because it says at, at top it's going to Market, but then it says it was shortened. And I was wondering if Market's also being done, as it was, I think was planned for 2024. Thanks.
Thank you, through, to Mr. Watson, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and through you to Counselor Miller and others. Yes, in my conversation with Mr. Lozey, or by text at least, earlier today, yep, confirmation that the intent is to go to Market Street. The question of whether or not Market Street itself is included is a question and I'm happy to take that back and just confirm with you. But regardless, in order for us to meet construction deadlines for this year, it would be important for council's consideration of the, of the tender award, knowing that we can certainly come back and confirm the Market Street inclusion.
Counselor Luck, do you have a question? Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, I had a question kind of on the similar lines where they were saying that things have been cut. And it says here that this first phase along Millennium Drive and will incorporate active transportation with the roadside trail system. And I wanted to ensure that this road tried, roadside trail system is as per the master transportation plan and is being paved. It's not just a gravel roadside trail.
Thank you for the question, through you to Mr. Watson, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I need to take that one back in fairness. I know that there, the comment that Mr. Lozey had offered at the time was that there is to be a trail beside Millennium Drive as part of the active... is to be a trail beside Millennium, uh, Drive as part of the active transportation commitment. What the actual finished surface of that trail is, I re- I need to go back and cha- double check and I'm happy to.
Can I, uh, can I s- speak to that?
Uh, just, okay, just one, please. Okay, follow up question?
Okay, thank you. Um, I guess that would be my concern about voting on this motion, only because I would like to think that we are, you know, as per the master transportation plan, we are trying to put active transportation infrastructure in. And I would hate to see us cut costs there because especially in that location, we had already identified that it was needed because a lot of residents at Shanex really have no safe passage. So by putting a trail, you're cutting out wheelchair users, walker users, like it's not accessible. Um, so again, based on our active transportation working group and master transportation plan. I think it would be very short sighted for us to put a trail that wasn't paved. So hopefully that's not the case. When I went back and looked at our master transportation plan, it does talk about sidewalks, but in lieu of sidewalks, you could do a, a multi-use trail. But again, the intention would be for it to be accessible, um, so that people could ride, walk. And, you know, it's not super accessible when you have uneven ground with gravel. So I just, I'm uncomfortable voting on this motion without the information.
Um, so noted. I just want to check, Counselor Olson, did you have a question? No, it, you don't have a question? Okay. So, i- it, uh, valid question, whether it's going to be paved or whether it's just gravel. So, uh, it's sort of the essence. Um, I understand the, um, how quickly we need to get this approved. So what would you suggest Counselor? Or, um, Mr. Watson, how would you like to move forward? Or do, do you want to vote on the, do you want to vote? We need to vote? Oh, excuse me, Mr. Colburn, do you, were, you were able to help us out here? Thank you.
Based on the design drawings that I'm looking at right now, unless there's been changes, the design drawings indicate that it's a type D asphalt for the trail. Multi-use trail.
I, I just, I would be shocked if it wasn't.
I'm just, I'm just reviewing the information that's before me. So if there's been changes, I want it on the record.
Thank you for the information that's in front of you.
I may be running out of Band-Aids.
Donovan, do you have a question? No, okay. Uh, do we have a motion? The motion was put forward, we had a seconder. Uh, seen there's no more questions, we please vote now. Thank you very much. Just Counselor Luck? Okay, motion carried. So we do have, uh, reports and, um, Mr. Watson or, uh, Mr. Watson, did you wanna re- uh, you wanted to mention one of the reports?
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor and through you, members of council. I appreciate that you've got quite a list of reports here and I don't need to draw your attention in particular to uh, all of them by a long shot. Uh, that said, there are two that I thought, uh, just bear public mention. One being, um, the confirmation of Pavli Anand as the new director of the library. Uh, effective July the ninth. I knew that, we knew that Nora had ended her term as she moves on to look after library leadership in St. John, but wanted to certainly extend a welcome to Pav- Pavvi as she establishes herself as the new director here. And also, uh, to note, uh, with thanks, the twenty-five thousand dollars received from the Fundy Regional Service Commission in support of the KV GO program. Uh, it's certainly a contribution that we appreciate to help offset our costs related to its early implementation. With thank you to you Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much. Um, Counselor Donovan?
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to, uh, just like, uh, CAO Watson said, to, uh, welcome our new director and to pass along, uh, congratulations uh, to Nora Emerson on her new job and to wish her well, uh, in the future. She's certainly been a very big asset to our, uh, to our library system and to our community. Um, you know, as a member of the library board, it's one of the, you know, we, we work on various projects all the time and one of the projects we're working on right now is a fundraising, uh, project. And, uh, so the, the library will be hosting a murder mystery night. Um, and it's going to be on October fourth from six to nine thirty. You have to get tickets and you can get tickets at the KV, uh, Public Library. They're fifty dollars and there's a silent auction. Uh, light snacks and beverages, um, provided throughout the night. So I think it's a very fun opportunity to get out and support the library. And it's a, it's an innovative one on our, on our end to raise more, uh, funds to help, uh, help better our community. So if anybody's interested, you can find those tickets and more information at the library. Thank you.
To Counselor Donovan, um, Counselor Bigger.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to mention, I read with, uh, uh, some happiness, the, uh, uh, letter that was sent to us by the owners and operators of the Kennebake Zapple Orchard. Uh, they were, uh, citing how grateful they were for our works department, uh, resurfacing Mean's Cove Road. They seem to uh, have a, a lot of, uh, sort of, you know, and, uh, gratefulness, uh, uh, as owners of a business here in our town. Uh, and they were so appreciative of that. And so I just wanted to give a kudos to our, uh, works department. Man, it's been hot out there and I cannot imagine every time I drive by a road crew, uh, what they've been enduring out there. And of course, to avoid sunburn and heat exhaustion, they sort of have to cover up as well. It's not like you can be out there in a speedo or something. And so, uh, that just adds more heat, I think. And so, uh, it was so nice to read this note. And so I, I, I hope that the works team will, uh, you know, take some, some delight in that. So thank you very much.
Thank you Counselor Bigger. Counselor Miller?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Uh, I guess, I just have a question and a comment on, on two of the reports. Um, on the annual report, I, quite honestly, I really like this, uh, I read Ross's all the time, so you can read it in ten, ten pages. Uh, I guess I just have a slight question correction on, on when we look at the, the salaries for the remuneration for the merch and the expenses. I was quite shocked when I saw I had an expense here, cause I haven't filed an expense report since September twenty-twelve for forty-three dollars. So I've never done one since then. Uh, but then I did the math backwards and since I don't have a town phone and I have an automatic expense on my, on my regular phone, that's where the four hundred and fifteen dollars comes from. So I guess for clarity on that one, if that's included in my expense, then the sixty-five dollars or whatever we pay for everybody else's phone should be included in their expense. So um, I think it's just because in my pay stub, it says expense, right? So, so that was just kind of a, just a, a comment on that because like I said, I, I've never put in a expense report since twenty-twelve. Um, and it was just kind of on the merchandise. I know it's mandatory, but everybody's got like eighteen forty-seven except for Counselor Ol- Olson's got five ninety-four. So it just, uh, if, if whatever merchandise we're, we're spending, cause I mean, I, I don't give, I've never given away any merchandise to anybody. I know it's, but the town does. So that one was just a little strange. So it was just a little bit on the expenses. And I had one question on the, um, building, which is going crazy as we all know, but I, I was just, uh, curious for, my gosh, I forget the name of uh, Mr. Andrews, uh, Development Jewett Street or the, the one right at the end of Southwood? I think they've put in three new, uh, sixplexes s- so far this year, but it shows nothing from January. Does, did he put in his development, uh, building permits earlier? No, I see the nodding. Okay. That's why I was, I was just curious, cause I, I've known like three have gone up in the last three months. So, okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Uh, Counselor Miller, I just wanna, did, did you refer to M E R as merchandise? M E R C as merchandise? A mandatory employee related ex- costs. Yes. Just so that you know. CPP? Okay. Uh, yeah, no, I, I thought you said merchandise. I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify. Okay, okay. Yeah. Okay, um. Yes. Counselor Luck, you had a comment and Counselor Olson is next. Okay. Counselor Luck?
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, just, I guess two comments. Um, I want to just commend staff. It was a great annual report. So, uh, lots of information and it's quite interesting in there. So I'd encourage, um, you know, all residents to read it. It's definitely insightful. And I also wanted to, similar to, to Counselor Bigger, I wanted to comment on item G, the, uh, thank you note. It's always nice. Sometimes we tend to hear only the negatives. So it's nice to get, um, letters from residents commending us on our work. So I did want to thank the works department and council because I guess to build off that, um, I mean, who doesn't love the smell of new pavement? So anyway, it's beautiful, but, um, speaking with a lot of residents, um, in terms of just quality of life, I know that we think it's just a road. But the addition of the widened shoulders, what I've been hearing is that there's been families that live on that road that would never let their kids or even their wives or, you know, family members walk on that road because there wasn't a safe shoulder. Um, and now there is. So anyway, just kudos because it's really making a big difference to the residents in that area where it's beautiful pavement to drive on, but it's also adding to the safety and the usability where it's not just cars that can use it. So anyway, thank you to, to staff and council for supporting that initiative. It's, it is beautiful and hopefully we can eventually get the rest of that street done, but um, it's still beautiful and, uh, just wanted to, um, acknowledge the, uh, the positive letter of thanks from, uh, KV Orchard. Thank you.
And Counselor Olson?
No, nothing.
Nope, we're good. So that's it, I believe, for, um, reports. So could I have a motion, please? No, a motion for reports received and filed? No motion required? Okay, um, so, uh, business arising from committee of the hall? There is none, um, a motion to adjourn, so moved, a seconder? Counselor Luck? Uh, so yes, um, so we're going to close open and we're going to go back into close. Committee of the hall, open committee of the hall, closed committee of the hall. One of them. Could I have a, a vote, please, on the close? Please vote, adjournment? There, I'm catching up with you. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned. Okay. You're not changing over the video. So we are going back to, we have one item that we didn't get complete. And we were, we, there is a motion on the floor. And on the question, we were going to Counselor Luck on, are you, everybody okay with the motion? Do you need a review of the motion? Are you, you're good? Okay. So Counselor Luck, please.
Um, so I guess I'm directing my question to CAO Watson, um, in regards to my earlier comments around just, you know, um, you know, cause I know the motion is, is to have them both as per the recommendation as administrative authority. So I assume that means that there's no council oversight and based on the conversation and discussion we had, not knowing what, we don't know until we kind of start peeling back the onion in terms of what that potentially would look like. I guess my comment was would it be better to keep it open until we know what that looks like? Cause I just, I just wonder, and maybe not, like, I guess I don't know what the intention of that management support and oversight of volunteers. But I think there could be some, um, kind of, um, um, I don't know, uh, opportunity or to actually address some of the committee stuff that we talked about within that policy. So I guess that's why I was questioning if it should only be administration at this point until we kind of know exactly what those look like.
So what, I, I, I'm gonna ask Mr. Watson to answer, but it just off the top of my head, I'm wondering if there's a distinction between committee volunteers and volunteers, like helping with the Santa Claus parade, you know, helping with uh, gardening or whatever that be compared to a committee volunteer. So, um, but I'll let you, Mr. Watson. I'll turn that over to you. Thank you.
Super. Thank you Deputy Mayor and through you to Counselor Luck. I, I agree completely. Uh, the management oversight and supportive volunteers was not conceptualized to include committee members when we first gave that some, some thought. Um, so my recommendation would be, um, perhaps to just a friendly amendment to the motion as it stands to exclude committee members from what's being proposed today. That would leave us with the authority to, and, and the, and the direction to move forward on the all other volunteers piece under the administration. And would allow the, uh, committee work and review to be undertaken. At which point we can either decide, you know what, we need to make an amendment to that policy and embed the committee volunteers into it, or have something else that stand alone under co- under council's authority. So my recommendation would be just do, to do that, to make a friendly ammen- amendment to the motion to exclude committee volunteers from the scope of the project.
Um, just, who put the motion forward?
Counselor Thompson.
Counselor Thompson, would you be okay with that amendment? Okay. Counselor Olson, were you looking for a question? No? So we have an, an amendment to the motion to exclude committee volunteers. So we're good? Just a, just a moment, please. Um, so Counselor Thompson has amended her motion. So do we need a vote for, on the amend, for her, not to her, for her? Lisa, can you, can you state that, please, so that we know?
So the. Council can make an, a motion to amend that motion as per Counselor Bigger's comment. Um, but also the, the, uh, agreement to make the amendment i- is okay too. Yeah.
So it's half and half. Each one is good. So, um, Counselor Thompson agreed to amend her motion. So, um, the motion has been amended. Can we have a vote? Please vote now. So we're, we're all done, um, except for a motion to adjourn. Thank you for your patience. With me tonight, there was a lot going on. Uh, motion to adjourn. Thank you very much. Counselor Olson, all those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. It's gotta be in the Guinness World Book of Records. I didn't get, um, did you get that vote? That's right, you're the man. You're the man.